Would we rise in celebration of our pledge of allegiance to the white of our country? Commissioner Bennett.
Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for watching over us in our city. Please give us wisdom as we make decisions for the citizens of Winter Garden, even watch over our first responders. And Jesus, take my prayer.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome all here to the city. First on the agenda is approval of amendments from October the 12th meeting. They have been distributed. Are there any additions, suspensions, or corrections? Very nice. We need a motion. So move. We have motion approved. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Next, we do a proclamation, twenty-three dash oh eight, Week of the Family. John Stank. Sound good?
Want to shake your hand one more time?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hold this like this? Yes, ma'am. Proclamation twenty-three dash oh eight, whereas the city of Winter Garden is blessed with a multitude of families, an essential part of the cultural, social, and spiritual fabric of our community. And whereas the city of Winter Garden recognizes that strong families are the center of strong communities, that children live better lives when their families are strong, and that families are strong when they live in communities that connect them to economic opportunities, social networks, and services. And whereas everyone has a role to play in making families successful, including neighborhood organizations, businesses, nonprofit agencies, policymakers, and families themselves. And whereas during the Week of the Family, city residents should take time to honor the importance of families and recommit to enhancing and extending the spatial connections to support and strengthen them throughout the year. And whereas during the week, we urge the residents of the city of Winter Garden to join other agencies and organizations throughout the state to honor and celebrate our families. Therefore, it is my great pleasure and privilege as the mayor of the city of Winter Garden to hereby proclaim the week of Saturday, November the fourth through Saturday, November the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Week of the Family in the city of Winter Garden, and urge all citizens to share in this intention. Thank you.
We appreciate Winter Garden because here it's like every week is Week of the Family. It's filled with wonderful activities and a great spirit. Thank you again.
Thank you. Regular business, recommendation to approve purchase and renewal of new five-year contract with Axon.
Chief, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're currently approaching the end of a five-year contract with Axon. This is for use of our body cameras in storage and cloud. This is for the next five years, and it's for the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. And it will be each for the next five years. So we have requested this in the budget, which was approved. Just want to ask you to go ahead and make the agreement and make the purchase. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one. That was interesting to have average savings per year to show that they spent a lot of time calculating it. They came up to forty-seven thousand, seven thirty-eight, and ninety-two, but nowhere did they get the key. So I assume y'all looked at it and they gave us a good discount.
Axon is pretty much the only major game in town for us, so they have, they kind of have police departments hostage. And there was a significant increase, and we've pushed back a little bit, so they did discount it for us. Our current contract years are eighty-six thousand and change.
Very good.
They have a significant price increase.
Yes.
Do they manage and house all the video data?
They house it all.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? We need a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second? We have a motion, second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve purchase of FUSESS system video and data collaboration platform. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This was also requested in the budget and approved. With this system, what this does is it allows us to gather all the camera feeds in the city and put them all in one platform. We could also advertise for the public and neighborhoods to share their cameras with our FUSESS system if you approve it. And which will allow, if something happens, we can geographically go to an area and pull all camera feeds in, which will give us real-time video if we want, or we can go back and search for an incident that may have occurred in the past. So it's a valuable system. This would obligate us for a three-year term. We do have it budgeted, and this is for a purchase amount of eighty thousand. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
None, but I do want to say that I applaud police department using this technology. It looks amazing what our AI engine can do now. And looking at the incident that happened in Maine, you know, in the last twenty-four or so hours, the ability for us to look at cameras that people voluntarily sign onto the system with, you know, gives us a much broader picture of, you know, suspected cars, people. I give it, it's an extraordinary device, and I'm embracing that we're going after this kind of technology, so nice job, sir.
That's for sure.
If we need a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next, sir. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Purchase of the new three-D laser scanner. Yes, sir.
What this device is, this is a three-D laser scanner. Basically, it maps crime scenes. We typically use it on major crime scenes. A lot of times we'll use them on serious injury and homicide, traffic homicides out on the scene. We don't have one that operates currently, so we are in dire need of one. This one here would come from our company locally in Regal. With this one, they would actually give us a loaner unit while this one would be on order. And I have seen it demoed and does work very well. And it would cut the time we had to close a road tremendously. Because right now, we have to do physical measurements and marking, which closes roads for hours. This could cut it down to, you know, a lot less time we would have to close a road.
Correct.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Have we had one of these systems before, chief?
We had a Pharaoh system before, but it's very old and it's inoperable. And it's not supported by the company any longer. And when it was working, we still had to keep the roads closed for a while.
This is a good thing, because even your officers are out there. There's so much going on. You get that video, you can go back later and look further. Yeah, and that's a motion there.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second? We have a second? All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Rankings and award the enterprise resource planning software implementation to B S and A. Yes, ma'am.
It's mouthful.
Yes.
May the may and commissioners, the city went out for RFP for a new ERP software implementation services, and we received eight responses. Based on review of the proposals, a selection committee determined that the highest ranked proposal was submitted by B S and A. And staff recommends approval of awarding the contract to B S and A and to also authorize the city manager to enter into contract negotiations and execute the contract. Happy to answer any questions we have.
Questions from the commission?
I just wanted to know, is this all in the cloud or is this?
Yes. Moving from server to cloud.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We know you negotiated it well, so we need a motion.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Recommendation through site plan for twelve oh seven Daniels Road. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a request for site plan approval for a three-point-four-six acre parcel located at twelve oh zero seven Daniels Road, which is the location of a former, former mobile home park. The applicant is proposing to develop four single-story medical office buildings totaling approximately thirty thousand square feet. Plan includes associated site improvements such as parking, landscaping, and a stormwater pond. This proposal is consistent with the property's future land use designation of commercial and the C-two zoning requirements. Staff would recommend approval of the site plan. And I just wanted to say as an additional item, the applicant has agreed to modify the northern access point to right-in, right-out due to concerns that were raised about that entrance's proximity to the intersection of medical. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay, how are you going to do that?
The engineer sent me a sketch. It's kind of a, they call it a traffic separator. It's kind of a modified version of, it's not a whole pork chop, but it's a separator that would make it, it would make it not likely for cars to make that left-hand turn.
High enough for SUVs, not for oil. That's not where you're really going to stop it. I mean, I understand that, you know, the two driveways in and out, but with your turnpike on one side and fifty on the other with the McDonald's and the other one there, Daniels, and then two more coming in and out, I'm a traffic engineer. It just looks like a challenge.
Yeah, and they did agree to do that, and they'll also make sure that it's, it's designed in a way that they can still get emergency vehicles in and out.
So y'all are okay with it? Okay. Any other questions? Need a motion?
Make motion to approve the site plan for twelve oh seven Daniels Road with staff recommendations.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Recommendation to approve purchase of our FOSAT stripe and line for pavement marking services.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The pavement markings on West Bay and West Plant Street and Division Streets, as well as new press wheels, storing, and lining roads, are in need of replacement. The attached maps show the areas of the roadways where the pavement marking will be refurbished. The work will include center line, edge driving, directional arrows, stop bars, crosswalks, and reflective pavement markers. Staff would recommend approving and purchase order with FOSAT stripe line for pavement markings in the amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Needed, so thank you.
Need a motion?
Recommend approval of FOSAT stripe and line for pavement markings.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve purchase orders to Dale Beasley Construction for pipe section backflow. Yes, sir.
The existing lift station and piping, lift station number twenty-three, and two backflow preventers outside the wet well are in need of replacement. The existing piping is ductile iron, which is corroding, and will be replaced with PVC and two backflows that have failed due to age and the corrosive environment that they're in. Lift station twenty-three is a regional station that cannot be shut down and will need to be placed on bypass when work is completed. I would recommend that the city award a purchase order in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-three cents to Dale Beasley Construction to replace the piping and backflow preventers on the station twenty-three, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
And you know if they're going to use schedule forty or schedule eighty PVC?
No, no, we use DRAT even stronger.
Is it going to have any effect on our people that have their breaths?
Well, that, if you remember, the chemical we have added into the system has significantly reduced the odors that you smell. And with that reduction of keeping the H two S in liquid form, that'll, that'll prevent any of the gas eating away the rest of the piping, yeah. So it should, it should last a lot longer with that chemical.
Any other questions? We need a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a second? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation for special event, Holiday Market in downtown Winter Garden, Saturday, September second. Wonderful. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So the, this year is the second year for the two thousand twenty-three Holiday Market at downtown Winter Garden event, which will turn downtown into a gingerbread-like theme outdoor market, holiday market space while the streets are closed for both the Christmas and the golf cart parade. Merchant and vendor activities will be concentrated on Plant Street between Lakeview and Main Street. Merchants and vendors will also line the streets with display booths, ten-by-ten tents, selling various holiday items and goods. Staff recommends approval of application allowing the Holiday Market at downtown Winter Garden to take place on Saturday, December second, two thousand and twenty-three. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? We need a motion.
Motion to approve the special event, Holiday Market at downtown Winter Garden, September second, from twenty-four.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Special events, small business Saturday. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Small business Saturday, promoting the passion. It's promoted to encourage the shopping of local mom and pop shops throughout the nation nationally. So Winter Garden joins that celebration as well. Two live music groups will play music with a holiday twist under the Giselle Bo at the Centennial Plaza in downtown. Blues roots jazz musical performances will occur from twelve noon to four P M. And classic rock tributes and covers from five P M to eight P M. Staff recommends approval of the application allowing the small business Saturday event to take place in downtown on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? Need a motion?
Motion to approve small business Saturday, November twenty.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Next, sir. Commission convenes the community redevelopment agency. Recommendation to approve an authorized city manager to execute an agreement with the Black Business Community Development Corporation. Yes, sir.
So I see every budget item has been committed this year towards the legacy fund, also known as the East Winter Garden Housing Rehabilitation Grant Initiative. Requests for proposals were dismissed, were solicited, and the city received three proposal submissions. These proposals were evaluated by and ranked by a staff selection committee, where the Black Business Community Development Corporation prevailed as the most suitable responsible bidder for the required role of providing grant administration and construction management. The housing rehabilitation grant will provide fifteen to twenty East Winter Garden homeowners to receive internal and external housing improvements. We're excited about that. The Black Business Community Development Corporation proposal cost for grant administration and construction services is in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Staff recommends approval and authorization for the city manager to execute an agreement with the Black Business Community Development Corporation to provide housing rehabilitation grant administration and construction services in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, or is there help from Ms. Fowler to say anything?
I was unfortunately unable to attend the meeting where this was discussed, so I'm having to rely a lot on Mark's recommendation from the, from the meeting, but I understand it was unanimously approved by the CRA advisory board. And we did discuss this project, even including the city's legacy fund that will fund some of the houses outside the CRA later in this, in this process. So you, you've heard about the fund before. Most of you should be somewhat familiar with it, I hope. But I think it's a wonderful way for us to rehabilitate some deteriorating housing without gentrifying the neighborhood. It's, I'm anxious to see if it works, but I really hope it does. So I would, I would move that we approve the motion as stated, subject to a limit of two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Do we have a second?
Aye, Charlie Mewalden. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we do have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. A word appointed. Yes, sir.
So there is one vacancy in the CRA for the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board due to the resignation of Ms. Chloe Johnson-Brownson. Current applicants were reviewed, and the Community Redevelopment Agency Board has recommended Ms. Carmen Horn as a, who is a resident of the East Winter Garden neighborhood community, specifically District Three, which is also within the CRA boundaries. With that, staff recommends the appointment of Ms. Carmen Horn to the City of Winter Garden Community Redevelopment Agency CRA advisory, advisory board. And so I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions?
Question for our commissioner or district attorney. Was this question that you thought?
From what I understand, yes. There was a couple of people running on, Mark and I talked about it, and I think it was, you said it was unanimous?
It was unanimous. There was some discussion, but it ended up unanimous.
Okay, I would take their recommendation.
I was challenging you, while, for the appointment of the name that was given that I'm picking out right now for the economic development.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Anything else, sir?
Seems like a night to spend money for the commission.
We want your tax dollars to go to work.
Can't do any good in the bank, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
We got plenty of cameras to get you there.
Thanks, Mark. We'll adjourn as a CRA and reconvene as our city commission. Matters of citizens of Winter Garden. City Attorney.
Just, um, just a matter with respect to the lawsuit that was filed by Ms. Bigler, a lawyer challenging the commission's decision. With respect to that, the court issued a warrant show cause, which is the trigger that requires a response. So the city will be preparing a response, and the developer, most of the people preparing those responses. We think, you know, a lot of people said a lot of things. If you've got a copy of the lawsuit, you're editing it. Oh, my gosh, of course it's a little bit. So a lot of crafty, crafty things out there. In any event, we expect to, to respond here shortly. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. City Manager.
I would like to recommend canceling regular city commission meetings for November twenty-third and December twenty-eighth.
Is that a motion?
If someone would do a make a motion, please.
Motion to cancel the regular city commission meetings, November twenty-third and twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signature by the saying, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously.
Just a few more items. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the commission that we're going to install some speed cushions on West Bay. Installation is scheduled for Monday and Tuesday. The location is going to be just east of Stanman Estates entrance, right around Evergreen Apartments and west of Public Works entrance. The work is scheduled between eight and four. We do have variable message boards out there advertising construction and replacing those on the city's website. We did a six-day traffic study out there, counted roughly twenty-six thousand vehicles. Highest mark speed was seventy-four miles an hour. We felt like that it was ripe for some, some speed cushions.
Did we have the license plate we were on when that happened?
Just to, just to buy. And just two announcements regarding special events. Donut Dash is scheduled for November fourth from seven a.m. to eleven a.m. And Healthy Harvest is also scheduled on November the fourth, and that's going to take place within the farmer's market.
I just want to thank the city for almost at the end of the March road project. It's not going to go dry, but it's been a long time coming. Thank you, staff, and city manager Michael Hopper, and city manager John. Really appreciate you guys coming out and meeting with the residents, and I'm sure more to come on that.
And if I may just add to that, I, I'm pretty certain that you, we have not made anybody's Christmas card placed over my cabinet.
That's it.
That's it. Commissioner Bennett?
I just want to thank Mark, which is doing a great job in community development. We've done some events down in East Winter Garden, great responses. Everybody I'm talking to says the station's responsive, Mark is responsive, so. I know it's busy. We have our callers from District Three, so thanks for following up on that. You guys make us look good. We appreciate it. The downtown, oh, actually, going back to the, maybe CDC, are they also going to provide as an evaluation? Do you approve? Actually, I, I know we talked about it. I can hear about that.
Yeah, so part of it will be developing an application process. They will have a committee review. They will do inspections, and they will actually develop the grant documents. All of that will be coming back to the commission for approval. And if I may, I'd like to recognize that the president, Imaaz Long, just came in after we approved it. Was, well, she was born and raised here, by the way, so I'm pleased to be able to partner with her and make it this way.
And I just want to commend the city, not setting it up this way. This way, it doesn't have to, it's not us making the decisions. It's a committee, you know, from East Winter Garden folks evaluating these applications of who gets these money, who gets the money, gets the grants. And it takes it out of hands and puts, I think, even better set of hands, I believe, so. And thank you for doing it. And I want to make a comment about downtown. I haven't been downtown in a while. I went down, I think it was a couple of times this week. One Wednesday night, one Saturday night, and both times were just fantastic. And every time I come back and I come down, I realize, you know, how great it is and how lucky we have to have the city. People were just sitting around, and even people who don't want to go out and spend a lot of money at restaurants. And people just had chairs set up on the sidewalk in a circle, just, you know, conversating and socializing, and it was just great. And staff was around doing their thing and keeping things clean, and the police department, the fire department was there. It was just wonderful. So I want to thank staff for all that. We're very lucky to have staff this year. Thank you. I'll be all set. Okay.
I'll start by echoing the commission's comments. Last weekend, just for everyone that was involved, it just rocked. It was a lot of fun. The maze was just packed with kids and adults, and I took my mom through it. She got scared, so it was cool. Oktoberfest down, down here at Kirkland was great, and got a lot of what Mark said as well. Just everywhere you went up and downtown, it was, and and I don't know where we got that one rock band from, but they were fantastic. In fact, we have a lot of people come and how good they were. So I'd love to see them back again, but again, we just recreate all these special moments downtown, and it was great. Likewise, for Dr. Bradford Park, in fact, we have skeletons playing volleyball this year. That's gotta be like, that's not a weird thing I've seen. It's very, that's great. City manager, especially for Main Street, thank you so much. You know, obviously, we got a school down here. I mean, it's a long shot. People have been worried about that. You went in earlier this year and being at crosswalks, it's getting across the street, made it safe there. Come back to that and speed cushions, so really appreciate it. I know that was on a lot of people's minds. So thank you for being so diligent, getting that so quickly. That was a great thing. And then just overall, some things we've talked about, the different roads and stuff, and how we're moving forward. Appreciate all the work the city manager has done, the county, and others to just keep laying out a plan and take us forward, so. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Bennett?
Just want to echo what everyone said. As far as thank you for all your hard work, it shows, especially during the holiday season. It's a lot. Thank you for that.
Couple things on ethics training. Can everybody do it before the next meeting? Another hour of ethics training. First of all, Mayor, City Attorney, you can do it.
So that date is?
They got a poll calendar?
The tenth, yeah. So it'd be November ninth?
Yes, sir. November the ninth. Any suggestions? So is five-thirty okay with everyone? Then November? Five P. M., so is five-thirty okay with everyone then, November the ninth?
Yes, sir.
And you'll bring the refreshes?
Yes, sir, aye.
The next hour, we can do that on our own. We're going into neighbors. I know Commissioner Buchanan was always excited to get to the suits. So in honor of him, are y'all ready to start with the suits?
Right. Was there a remedy? Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will do that?
Unless it turns ninety degrees.
I know it. And I'll echo the others. I mean, downtown's wonderful. I know they unloaded five hundred pounds of hay. I mean, that's a lot of work on our staff. And but it does not go unnoticed. You can go anytime by there, and you just see people anywhere downtown. And do an excellent job with the group you can through town. I'll echo, maybe it's because the band is playing music of our era, but they were really good. We sat down and listened to them for a while. We do appreciate it. All our residents appreciate it. And y'all will make us, make our jobs easy, and we do appreciate it.